City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Roper.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Burris.
Here.
Alderman Fiss.
Here.
Alderman Reflin.
Here.
Alderman Wynn.
Here.
Alderman Lussen.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tindall.
Here.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, October 13th, 2014, meeting of the City Council. First item on the agenda is Mayor's public announcements, and I am delighted to announce that staff member Ilda Capriccio has a new son. His name is Sonny.
Santino.
Santino. All right. Thank you. Congratulations, Ilda. That concludes my public announcements. City Manager, do you have announcements?
I have no announcements, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. City Clerk, do you have communications for us?
No communications.
All right. Thank you. Moving right along, public comment. I'm going to call the first four speakers' names. Please give your name when you come up to speak, and the first four are Junad Rizki, Patrick Hughes Jr., Don Ziegler, and Tim Sandborn.
Junad Rizki. I had a few questions for Wally, but since he's not here, Marty could answer them, but if not, I'll just spoil you them. Let's go by item by item. Where is the $80,000 study on the reservoir? Since I see it's in the budget, you're going to spend $2 million on engineering for a tank this year in the budget. Could you explain where the study is? Number two, can you produce financial documents showing the so-called $500,000 debt from the Northwest Water Commission for the sales of its plain's water? Number three, someone suggested to me today that it may not be legal to transfer the water funds to the general fund. There was a bunch of comments, actually, and it was not about this, so that $3 million you transfer, maybe you could clarify that. Number four, last year I was told you did not approve the two 10% water increases. When you approved, you were not going to approve it. They had not been approved at that time. And now, this year, that was a 10% one last year in 2014. Staff has built their budget on a 10% increase. Can you discuss this? Number five, are the following accounts settled or paid? Next, or current, I should say, Next Theater, Chicken and Waffles, Petish Big Patio. Number six, why would you propose painting metric bridges? We don't own them. There's liability there. It doesn't even make sense when we have our own infrastructure problems. I realize the line item may have been tabled in Administrative Public Works, but why are we spending staff time on stuff like this? Number seven, can you produce to date the money you want to transfer from the motor fuel fund, $700,000, to the city budget? What's been spent so far to date? Number eight, can you please detail what utilities were going to be moved that Northwestern owns under Sheridan Road? And why would we have to pay for that? And why would you accelerate the schedule there on the Sheridan Road project? Number nine, can you explain why additional engineering was done and you realized you had large water pipes on Sheridan Road that needed to be replaced? When this is only in all city documents, but the real issue is how much does this project now cost at $10 million? Number 10, on credit cards, it appears we spent about $40,000 on pizza sandwiches and donuts. Can you outline this by department and what's going on, and is there a policy? And finally, number 11, the mashup. Can you explain the city spending on the mashup? What we contributed to this, and who pays for the tickets? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Patrick Hughes. I live at 1317 Livingston. My business is at 2000 Greenleaf here in Evanston. I'm just making a hello, and thanks for allowing us to come up and have public comment. I'm just making a comment about Penny Park and my appreciation for, you know, you all moving forward on, my hope is that the city will move forward on updating the park. I work on disability access and have since I was 19 years old, and I'm just, you know, pretty passionate about it. I look at access in a lot of different ways, but, you know, things like my son's former school, you know, Orington School, which has, I don't know, eight steps, 10 steps. No grandparent, no student could go to school there. When I look at the CTA, and this is not a rant, it's more just to say, there's access issues everywhere, and when we have a chance to make an update, we really, really should as part of the public. You know, I think about the CTA L stops, there's no accessible L stop. You've got Linden, you know, the two hospital stops are not accessible. So if you were in a chair or one of the many, you know, hundreds of employees at the hospital, you couldn't go to the hospital or to Ryan Field or to anything off of Central Street or South Boulevard. So when we have a chance to make an upgrade like we do right now on this park, I do hope that we make it accessible, you know, so that a grandparent could play with their child or a child with a disability would be able to play. It's pretty simple. I think there's a nice moment here right now, and I hope we capture it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ziegler.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is Donald Ziegler. I reside at 1430 Allenwood Avenue and proudly chair the Evanston Health Advisory Council, which represents a wide array of community residents and organizations that come together several times a year to advise the Health Department and Human Services on matters of Item H1 on the agenda refers to tobacco, and nearly all smokers start and become addicted as kids or young adults, the vast majority before the age of 21. If one has a doubt about this, look to the tobacco industry for confirmation. RJ Reynolds reported in 1982, quote, "If a man has never smoked by age 18, the odds are three to one he never will. By age 21, the odds are 20 to one," end quote. And Philip Morris indicated in 1986 that raising the legal minimum age of cigarette purchasers to 21 would gut their young adult market. Even though smoking rates among our high school students here in Evanston have declined in recent years, yet an unbelievable 15 to 21% of our seniors still use highly addictive tobacco products. Our young people are the tobacco companies' replacement smokers, since their other customers are either quitting or dying off. Last week, the Human Services Committee wisely approved our Health Advisory Council's recommendation to increase the age of sale, purchase, and possession of tobacco or liquid nicotine products currently from 18 to 21 years of age. What would this do? Adoption would, one, delay the age when young people first begin using tobacco and thus reduce the risk that they will transition to regular or daily tobacco use. Moreover, raising the age would increase their chances of quitting should they become regular users. Second, addressing or raising the age to 21 here in Evanston would increase the age gap between adolescents initiating tobacco use and those who can legally provide them with tobacco products. Thirdly, younger adolescents would also have a harder time passing themselves off as 21-year-olds than they would passing themselves off as 18-year-olds. This could reduce underage sales and the availability of tobacco products from older friends and classmates. In addition, a legal age of 21 simplifies identification by retailers rejecting drivers' licenses. Lastly, passage of this measure would again demonstrate that Evanston is a leader in improving the health and quality of life of our citizens. Now, other communities are paying attention to us. Our neighboring communities and the rest of the state will follow our example on this issue as they did when we went smoke-free several years ago. Please vote yes tonight on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Donnelly.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tim. Tim, you're up.
I'm next. Here, Tishdale, and members of the City Council. I'm Dr. Timothy Sandborn. I'm a former, I grew up in Evanston and am now a cardiologist at Evanston Hospital. We all know that smoking causes heart disease, heart attacks, strokes, cancer, and serious chronic respiratory diseases. The American Heart Association estimates that it kills 500,000 Americans every year and leads to a healthcare cost of $200 billion per year and loss ability to continue working. Raising the age from 18 to 21 makes a lot of sense in that research has shown that the adolescent brain is particularly susceptible to the addiction of nicotine, much more so than adults. As Mr. Ziegler has pointed out, a lot of other communities have already gone forward and raised the age of sale of tobacco from 18 to 21. This now has reached 13 communities in the Boston area, and to date, no retail store has gone out of business because of this increase in the age to buy cigarettes. This age group only represents 2% of all tobacco sales in the nation, so I would strongly encourage you to pass this ordinance to raise the age to purchase and sell tobacco products from 18 to 21. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chris Donnelly. Siswar Maran. Lauren Barsky. And Junad Rizki.
Hello. I'm going to talk about two things real quick. One is the smoking, you know, everything he just said is correct, but all you have to do is enforce the checking of IDs and prevent smoking, and when 18 or younger, if you do that, you're fine. Either way, I think you should enforce one of the two rules. I want to talk about Penny Park. My wife sent me here tonight along with a number of women from the park. I've got an eight-year-old, a five-year-old, a three-year-old, a four-month-old child, and my wife goes to parks throughout the whole Pitt County area. There's three wood parks in Chicago, and Oz Park, one on Petersen, and Western or something like that, and then Penny Park. I think, you know, our kids will say, really tell you what it's all about, and the kids say that that's the best park around, right? And to change that park, it takes something so great away from the idea of what it was with families and kids getting involved. You know, I think there should be a lot more discussion to talk about rather than just what we've been, you know, lack of seeing a poster on a tree, even if they've known anything about it. So I think there should be a different discussion, whatever that is. So I wanted to say that, and I think, you know, I saw an article last night about Penny Park, about some of the questions of what is the reason behind it? Is the American Disabilities Act, has there been studies done on that or anything? What is the concern? You know, having a park is where you bring kids together, and my understanding is that you want to have a part of the park be for the tots, and a part of the park be for the penny gardeners, a part of the park be for the grade schoolers, and another part for the something else. But Penny Park is one park where everyone goes and plays together, and you're really going to take a piece of kids' education and life and kind of create the park, in my opinion. So I don't know what to say. I think I might contribute to the party, but any way to slow it down and open up the public discussion, I think. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'm the member of the council. My name is Caesar Mary, and I'm the owner, one of the two owners of Sketchbook Room Company in 825 Chicago Avenue in the alley. What I, excuse me, I'd like to just say a few words about the A8 and A9 ordinance to amend P1 and P2 to allow the retail sale of 22-ounce bottles of beer, craft beer. I love the description that Josh gave earlier today to all of you, what that is, to some that didn't know. And I wanted to start by actually saying that our business, we are not fully open yet. We've done a soft opening. It's a dream come true for me. We have been doing really well. We sold over 200 memberships. For those who don't know, we're doing a membership where if you sign up, the members who sign up, they come in once a month or twice a month to get their Rowland, which is 64 ounces or 32 ounces, and about 90% of those are within less than a mile of where we are. And I should have brought a little printout and put it online as well, so you can see that there's a little heat map that shows where everybody is, which is exactly what we were looking for. It's basically serving the community, people that can walk there and on the way home or just not have to drive. So it's been great. As Niki, our neighbor, has mentioned, Streets Alive brought a lot of people to the area, and there was about 400 people that visited us in a span of about four hours. So we're really blessed that Streets Alive and that neighborhood supports us so well. But anyway, I suggest all of you may visit when we're open. You'll see what we're about. We're all about the neighborhood. So one of the things that I wanted to say about the amendments, P1 and P2, is I do believe it's a very simple, I do believe that people should be heard, and I also would like to say that it's a very simple amendment, and I will come back to reapply for it. I'm not really sure what I need to do, so I will talk to Alderman Wynn, because I did send emails to Melissa, not Melissa, Teresa, and we exchanged emails about the meeting that was happening. I wasn't in town, unfortunately, and it's just basically we exchanged emails that it will be on the agenda. But because we're not even fully open, that's not a problem for us right now, just to be honest with you. And so I think there's a little bit of miscommunication there perhaps, to get us up there. So again, just wanted to say, you know, thanks for the opportunity and to, you know, everybody trying to make this as simple as possible to everyone, including ourselves and our customers, who out of those 250 or so have been asking, are you going to have specialty beers? And I'll throw in another description of why the two 22-ounce bottles. It is not to make people, to make it more accessible for people to drink them. It's actually, back in the day, a lot of Belgian beers are actually made and fermented in the bottle, so the only way you can actually make them is...
You need to wrap up.
So that's about it.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. For those of you that weren't here at the Administrative Public Works Committee, my name is Lauren Barsky. I am currently the public face of PreservePennyPark.org. I want to be really clear, because for those of you that weren't at that meeting, I can see the direction things started to take, which is essentially that I and the group are anti-accessibility. I wanted to believe that council members could understand that someone can be entirely in support of accessibility but have problems with the way this process has unfolded, but since maybe there's some confusion, let me be really clear. Our group and these issues are about transparency, not accessibility. All right? I'll be real short. On your website and in the packet you got tonight, why is the park being renovated? Failing play equipment. Find out, no tests have been done on the play equipment. Why do I care about that? Maybe that's a stupid issue. I don't know. But the reason I care is because a structural engineer is how structural stability is assessed. If you're going to assert that the playground is not structurally sound, then I'd like to know that someone tested it. Number two reason for the park being demolished. Quote, "Lack of compliance with safety and accessibility standards." That's on the city's website. That's in the packet you got tonight. What safety and accessibility standards is the park in violation of? Standards that apply to existing parks. Right? That's what the park is. It's existing. None. Third, I don't know if you all had a chance to look at the project's schedule, which is in your packet. It outlines the project that Leathers has set forth. The last community meeting, committee meeting number two, was March 2014. Next event, final design, January 2015. Events after that, community meeting number three and community meeting number four. Is, this is a question, is the design to be printed, I'm sorry, to be set forth on January 15, the final design? If so, that means that no other meetings will take place between now and then. Four, I am under the standing that I'm, I'm under the impression I'm supposed to understand this is just a rendering, okay? I get it. Supposedly, I can't tell, and none of us can tell from this, and sorry, this is so small, I know nobody can see it, but it's on our website, PreservePennyPark.org, and it's on the city's website. It doesn't look like you can tell scale from this, okay? Initially, but if you look at the bottom, there's a little legend that says "scale." And then you think, well, how do you tell the scale just looking at this? You know, it's hard, and it's not intuitive, but what you do is you use math. And if we can all call back our high school math, a squared plus b squared equals c squared. You take a ruler, and you take the scale, and you do a squared plus b squared, and you get c squared.
Lauren, I need you to wrap up.
Okay, I'm sorry. In other words, what I'm trying to say is you can determine the height of this facility from this drawing. Quick point, last point. The reason I bring that up is because in the contract that you got, design phase, already completed, right? Right now, it's already completed. So my question is, is it already completed? And if it's not, why does it say that? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Am I next?
Yes, you are.
Not agenda topic. Walking in here tonight, I was surprised to see we had paved some of the parking lot out here. It interests me because did this council just approve a project to redo the entire parking lot? And what area was paved or redone? Where the mayor, the alderman, and visitors park in a small area over here. And why was it done? Again, was this another under $20,000 project, like the big patio? I mean, really, we ought to talk about these things before we spend money on them. I mean, again, taxpayer money wasted. And the woman just, that just spoke touched on something I've talked about all the time. You have the Northwestern Water Tank. There were two engineering reports that said fix the tank top for a couple million dollars. Of course, the city wants to claim there's other engineering issues, and that we need to replace it at a $30 million price tag practically, and that will translate into huge water bill increases. But of course, I asked for the report tonight, which isn't even here, which I'm sure will show up at the budget hearing at the last minute, as it typically does, and that will end up for a 20% water bill increase on top of the one you're proposing in the budget now, and one you did last year, another 10%. So that might be up to 40%. And just on the one speaker about handicap, you know, the city does this things to their convenience. As we all know, when the city moved the TV station, and I've mentioned this several times here, the city basically denied access to the public, the second floor, right, putting it in the second floor of the service building, because there is no elevator other than a freight elevator to get people up there. There's no access. Very convenient. Really, and finally, this whole thing on smoking is very interesting, too. Here again, the city wants to pass something on smoking, but you're quite interested in selling medical marijuana. So are people going to be smoking that? You're going to basically profit motive. And I think I've talked about the other issue there. For 10 years, you left that parking garage space vacant at the cost of probably $500,000 in taxpayer money, sitting there wasted. You never rented it, you never built it out. So, I mean, the issues here are very interesting, how we continue to waste tax dollars and do things at the council's convenience, because frankly, they're going to smoke, I assume they're going to smoke the marijuana, so it's a very interesting thing.
Thank you. Next, Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda, please?
Madam Mayor, it's getting increasingly difficult to follow that.
Well, the consent agenda might help us all.
But I will talk. Madam Mayor, the consent agenda is as follows. Ask for the approval of minutes of the council meeting September 22. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting September 29. Administration Public Works Committee met this evening, and we ask for approval of payroll Your approval is requested of the bills October 14, $6,512,377.99. Credit card report for the period ending August 31 is $128,220.55. Committee requests your approval to authorize the manager to execute a contract for the fire station number two interior renovation project with O'Hara Construction in the amount of $157,451.72. Tree purchase is recommended, 224 trees and planting services for 100 trees from Suburban Tree Consortium in the amount of $53,683.76. In addition to the city budget money, this is also being paid for by Replant Express Program, which allows residents to pay the cost of the trees post-delivery to be added to the planting list immediately. Approval is requested also for the manager to execute a sole-source contract for playground design and construction.
Alderman Rainey, could you just take that?
Yes, I will. A4, staff recommends and the committee recommends council review and place on file the single audit report for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2015. Resolution 79R14 is recommended for adoption. It authorizes the manager to sign notification of grant awards with a maximum award amount of $28,639 with age options to fund and operate the long-term care management program for the city of Evanston. Also, we ask that you approve adoption of Resolution 80R14, which authorizes the manager to sign notification of grant awards for the maximum award amount of $47,556 with age options to fund and operate congregancy and your meals program at the Levy Center and Fleetwood Jordan Community Center. Also, it's important that we pass the renewal contract between the city of Evanston and Catholic Charities to provide a senior congregant meal program at the Levy Center and Fleetwood Jordan for the period October 1, 2014 through September 30, 2015, in the not-to-exceed amount of $4.45 per lunch meal. The total program contract value is projected to be $47,556. We ask approval for Resolution 81R14. Council would authorize you to transfer $700,000 of motor fuel tax funds for general maintenance of streets and city, maintenance of streets by city forces. Next, Madam Mayor, A8. We are removing A8 from the council agenda and holding it in committee. Ordinance 114014 amends the City Code 346P2 to allow for the sale of beer in 22-ounce containers for off-site consumption by craft breweries. That's for introduction. A10, we ask your approval to introduce ordinance 122014 to dissolve the Southwest Tax Increment Financing District effective December 31, 2014. Approval is also requested for the MWEBE Enterprise Development Committee. The Enterprise Development Committee is asking that we pass this ordinance, 6014. It's an amendment to the MWEBE and Local Employment Program revising the penalty section from $100 per day to a 1% total project value penalty. You'll recall that we held this previously when we introduced it, it had a 3% penalty. So this has been revised by the committee, it's some really good work. Ordinance 112014 is a request by the Liquor Commission to create a new Class S1 license that would allow for... section from $100 per day to a 1% total project value penalty. You'll recall that we held this previously when we introduced it, it had a 3% penalty. So this has been revised by the committee, it's some really good work. Ordinance 112014 is a request by the Liquor Commission to create a new Class S1 license that would allow for not-for-profit organizations to have an annual liquor license for the cost of $500. The Planning and Development Committee met this evening and asks your approval for ordinance 50014, which amends Title IV, Chapter 14 of the city code, from site plan and appearance review to design and project review, now commonly known as DAAPR. Staff has identified several revisions that are noted in the ordinance that will change this review process and lead to improved recommendations. Next, P2. This is a special use request for a type 2 restaurant at 1613 Chicago Avenue, known as...
Sherman Avenue.
Known as, wait, 1613 Sherman Avenue. My, my...
Popcorn.
Dot popcorn. Thank you, thank you. Sorry about that. This is for introduction, it meets all the standards of a special use. Next, ordinance 110014 is a zoning text amendment for child and adult daycare centers in the C1 and C2 districts. This would make for special use in those districts. Madam Mayor, and council, P4 is off the consent agenda. It'll be addressed by the committee chair, but it's being held in committee. Ordinance 116014 grants a special use for Animal Hospital, Khyber Veterinary Services LLC at 1815 Central Street for Action. Under Human Services, ordinance 111014 amends the city code to increase the age of sale, purchase, and possession.
Do you take that off the consent?
This is off the consent agenda. Will be addressed by the Human Service Chair. Under Economic Development Committee, that committee and staff recommend approval of 78R14, which authorizes the manager to execute a third and final grant agreement, when now we're cooking, for an amount not to exceed $38,400 for the period October 15 through December 31, 2015, to assist with the expansion of formal food business incubator program. The Rules Committee recommends approval of, and staff, of proposed revisions to the council rules 62 and 95, Section 62, which pertains to Citizen Comment, and 95 pertains to the Human Services Committee, having to do with their start times. Madam Mayor, you've not recommended any appointments, so I conclude the consent agenda and move forward.
Well, thank you very much. It's been moved and seconded to pass the consent agenda, seeing no lights on for further discussion. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Grover?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Bradway?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
The consent agenda passes. Alderman Holmes, would you help us with Administration and Public Works?
Yes, Madam Mayor. A3.3, approval of the contract with letters of associate for professional consulting services for the Penny Park renovation project in the amount of $38,707. I move approval.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. I can see why people are confused about this, because I'm confused a bit about it. We, we do have a budget of roughly $450,000 for the project, but some of the materials imply that the design part is done. I haven't seen the design, I don't think anyone's seen the design. And the, the, the scheduling, according to the proposal from the, the consultants, indicates that there will be follow-up community meetings, but it's confusing as to whether or not there's going to be any input involved in that. So my impression is that what we're, what we are passing is this consulting agreement for them to, you know, work us through the project. But I guess sort of a threshold question is, is the design already done? I assume it's not. So if we could just get some clarification from, on that. So the people in the community are reassured that it's not a done deal and that there will be opportunity for input.
Director Robinson, do you want to answer that?
Sure. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. Suzette Robinson, the Director of Public Works. Alderman Wilson, the design is not complete. What we have, the consultant, in conjunction with the kids from Cherry Preschool and Dewey Elementary School, created a, a concept. So that concept, in order to turn that concept into a preliminary design, and that schedule, the way it is listed, it indicates a, a final design and then two community meetings that actually will be a preliminary design. And then those two additional, uh, community meetings will actually further refine. Uh, I think what happened in A&amp;W, when some of that discussion came up about, there are certain elements that, um, we had a kind of a set budget number that we were working with originally. So what they have designed is roughly about $300,000, depending on the number of volunteers. So there is additional money in the budget to cover additional amenities as we work through the, the community process. So we envision two additional community meetings that will further refine the amenities within the park. And then we'll end up with a final design after that.
Okay. And so I guess this is the first part of getting the word out, that it's not a done deal, and there will be additional opportunities to participate and to, and to revise that. So, but there's, there's been a lot of buzz and conversation in the community that it's already been designed, it's already finalized, it's already a done deal, and that's not the case. And I just wanted to make sure it was clear to everybody that that's not the case, that it is an ongoing process, and there will be multiple opportunities to, to give input on what the final product's going to be.
And that's correct.
Right, so, and thank you for that.
Director Robinson, I have one question for you while you're up there. I don't seem to have what Alderman Wilson and everyone else has, the pretty-looking playground equipment.
It's not for this project, it's just a cash line.
Thank you very much, sorry. Alderman Bradway?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and also thank you, Alderman Wilson, for, for the comments. And thank you very much for Director Robinson, just for hosting the meetings and trying our best to get this information out. I, I think the, the one point that I want to make to council and also those that are listening is that this is the beginning of the process. Twenty years ago, I was, I was so young, I don't remember all the meetings, and I shared this during A&amp;W, that I had an opportunity to go out to Dalphrezo this past Sunday to see their community building, to see all the members of that city's community together working towards the park project. If I could just give you an idea of the, of the number of meetings that led up to their early building, I mean, you'd run out of time. But I will share that by supporting and, and, and passing this contract is, we're just now getting to the point where we'll start our, our community meetings, starting our various committees. There'll be an arts committee, there'll be a buildings committee, there'll be a communications committee, et cetera. So there will be so many opportunities for community engagement that it's going to be a huge project. And, and keep in mind, I mean, we could have very easily, several months ago, when we started to look at this project, when it was going through the CIP budget, just have staff design it and just build it. And instead, from a number of meetings, it was determined, you know, based on magic and the uniqueness of the park, that we would go through this community process. So this is the exact same process they went through 20 years ago. I appreciate all the, the members of the community that came out. We will do our best to make sure that our meetings are advertised. I'd like to remind folks that we meet on a monthly basis in the second ward, it's the second Thursday of the month. There is a newsletter that advertises all of the topics that are discussed. All of our city council meetings are broadcasted on our, on our, on our community channel. Evanston now has been covering this, just like they cover every single issue, along with the roundtable and also the Evanston Review. So if there is confusion over the input, I just encourage people to continue to search out those sorts, search out those media sources to get up-to-date information. So I will continue to work hard to get the word out, and I look forward to working with you all and the community to make sure that this is a successful project.
Uh, thank you. Alderman Holmes?
Oh, I'm, I'm, that's okay, Madam Mayor.
I was going to try to answer the question, but Director Robinson did a much better job.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Wynn.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I guess what I wanted just to follow up on something Director Robinson said. They'll also contact the Daily Northwestern, that's what they're talking about. But, but, from what you were saying, Miss Suzette, it sounded to me as though this was a concept design, and now the subsequent meetings are going to be just refining that? Or is this going to be the type of meetings, like for instance, we just had at Baker Park, we've had a couple of these, where there's a discussion with the community about, here's our funding, tell us what's going on with the park. And then they come back with, with concepts, and now we're having more, more discussions about what will happen in Baker Park. So, you know, I think that Penny Park has, plays a special role for many people here in Evanston. It's both of my children's, who are now 21 and about to be 18, favorite park in Evanston, and it's not walking distance from our house. But that's the one that they still cite as their favorite park to go to. So, you know, what, what is the process going forward from this?
I just wanted to, to back up just a little bit. The, the community process started in 2013. We held the, the first, and that was in advance of even putting funding in the budget for CIP, which is actually slated for 2015, the funding, additional funding. And in that initial community meeting, the decision point was, did we want to build the, the standard in-house playground improvement? Or did we want to consider using Leathers in the same community build process? And the community selected Leathers as a community build. So we have, that was our initial community meeting to basically get direction on what process to take. It was also communicated that Leathers no longer provides, they don't build wooden structures anymore. So going down the community build process with Leathers, that part was understood. Also, we held a, a subsequent community meeting as a part of the, the concept. So part of, when the, once the concept plan was unveiled, we actually held a community meeting after that. So we got, got input from residents after, or during the unveiling process. So there were several comments and notes that were taken in terms of additional amenities even then. So we have been working through the process, through the community, and then we also discussed it again at the, the second ward meeting just this past week. So I envision being able to go through and, and collect more input as a part of refining the, the design and the concepts.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Alderman Bradway. Would you like to speak? It really is time for the council to talk. It's really quick.
It's very quick. I just want to make a very quick point about what everybody just heard tonight. Early, we just heard Director Robinson say Leathers no longer builds with lumber, as I believe, if I heard that correctly. We, we heard Alderman Bradway earlier this evening talk about his visit to Dalphrezo, and how they explained that they're currently working with Leathers and Associates to rebuild their park 20 years later, just like we're doing. They're building it with lumber, as Alderman Bradway explained, they're putting it into cement. So I think that's great news. They're actually still using lumber.
Thank you.
What were the names to the two elementary schools?
Well, okay, wait, wait, wait.
No, it's all, I mean, one of the two.
I'm sorry, now, it's now time for the council.
Dewey and Cherry Preschool. Cherry Preschool and Dewey.
And Dewey. Those are the ones to initiate this whole thing?
Public comment is over now. Please. Alderman Fisk? Just very quickly, you, you don't want to use pressure-treated lumber anymore for playground equipment?
Thank you.
Why is that? Oh, because of the chemicals used to treat the wood.
What about the chemicals in the ground?
Seeing no lights on for further discussion. Please, please. City Clerk, would you call the roll on for the approval of the contract with Leathers and Associates for professional consulting services for the Penny Park renovation project?
Yes. Alderman Grover?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Burris?
Yes.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Bradway?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Right, to nothing, the motion passes. Alderman Holmes, do you have anything else?
Yes, ma'am. A8 was off, asked to be off the agenda as well. That was ordinance 113-014, amending city code section 3-4, 3-4-6P1 to allow for sale of beer in 20-ounce containers for off-site consumption. And it was discussed in the committee that we would hold it in committee. So I don't know, but I think Alderman asked for it to be off.
Okay, thank you. That completes your...
I mean, that completes my report.
Thanks. Alderman Rainey, planning and development?
Yes, ma'am. The only item on planning and development to be off the agenda is ordinance 120014, a special use granting for daycare center, not ready to go forward, it was kind of holding off.
All right, thank you very much. And everything else?
Human services.
Human services? Oh, there it is. Who's the chair?
Um, no, I'm sorry.
I know.
It's good.
Do you want to, Alderman Rainey, would you?
I'm a customer, and I am to human services. But I'm to the path of my friend. This is ordinance for introduction 111014, amending the city code to increase the age of sale, purchase, and possession of tobacco or liquid nicotine products from 18 years old to 21 years old. I move it to the...
It's been moved and seconded. Alderman Wilson?
And thank you. Personally, I would just have a complete ban, but it's not up to me, so. But the, the problem I have with this is the idea that it, it does essentially criminalize something that's legal across the border as far as possession and use of the products. So, you know, if someone is unfortunate enough to have already started smoking and become addicted to these products, we're imposing a $200 to $500 fine on possessing or using them. And I'm not comfortable with that. So I'm comfortable with the, with the ban on sale and purchase, but we're really troubled by the idea of, of criminalizing the possession of the products.
Thank you. Alderman Grover? You know, I thought about the same thing, Alderman Wilson, but, you know, given that I have two offspring who are right in that age group so far. And I think that for those in those young adult category who are already unfortunately addicted to tobacco and need their fix, maybe, I don't know, they can just use in their own homes, which is perhaps privacy of their own home, and which is, I don't think that our police would be looking to taking anyone possession.
It's still against the law to do that, so.
Thank you. Alderman Tendem?
Thank you. I've had, I have similar concerns. We've told these people, these young people, for years now that they can use at age 18, and we know it's a very addictive drug, taking away and criminalizing it, I think, is, is pretty harsh. We don't even have fines like that for possession of a, a certain amount of marijuana. So that, it seems excessive. I do worry about the enforcement of it, and what that would cause among young people if they, I mean, if they are addicted to this drug, they will use it. So I just don't want it to be a, just a big, you know, because I think it's, it's a very strongly addictive drug, and, and we need to sort this out. I support the, the ban on sale, sales and, and purchase, but I think we need to get a... get a little more thought about the, um, if there are going to be punishments for possession.
Uh, thank you. Alderman Holmes?
Um, and we had a really, I thought, good discussion at, uh, Human Services on this, and I am certainly in, in support, and Alderman Wilson and I too feel it, it's just banned it all. Maybe we should be like, um, C V S and be bold, and maybe we'll be the first city in the country to do that. How about that? I would certainly move that.
Yeah.
Tobacco sales.
Is that your motion?
I would, I'd say that we move that.
Well, I think, uh, I think maybe we should put that for another day.
Oh, okay.
But, uh.
Congratulations, Alderman Holmes.
Suzette?
Alderman Rainey?
I move we delete the provision regarding possession.
I second that.
Yeah. Uh, is that okay with the?
No, that's, that's what I was, what I was heading to.
Okay. Um, does any, do any, does anyone with lights on wish to talk to that specific issue? All right. Um, City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Grover?
No.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Burris?
Yes.
She said yes. Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Bradway?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
No.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Seven to two, the motion passes. All right, still see lights on from Alderman Fisk?
No, I haven't. Thank you.
You're happy? All right. And Alderman Grover?
I think we'll, I hope we'll still pass the, what's left of the ordinance, uh, which applies to both liquid nicotine products and, uh, regular tobacco products for sale to those between the ages of eight and eighteen and twenty-one. And one of the reasons that I was, uh, very supportive of this at the Human Services Committee is because not only do those sales account for two percent of all tobacco sales, so it doesn't look as if our retailers are going to take a hit, and the three C V S locations in Evanston are no longer selling tobacco products at all anyway. Uh, but the other reason is that if you are a sixteen-year-old, you're not likely to obtain cigarettes through an illegal sale. You're most likely to obtain a cigarette from somebody who's eighteen, who you go to school with. So I'm looking at removing cigarettes from the high school pretty much altogether, and just putting them out of reach of our young cohorts who are, as, as the doctors told us tonight, so vulnerable to, uh, tobacco addiction at an early formative age. So I hope we'll support the ordinance, even as amended.
All right, the ordinance is for introduction tonight. Uh, Alderman Rainey?
I'm absolutely supporting the ordinance, but I wanted to know, is Nicorette considered a nicotine product? Nicorette, it's the, um, gum that you chew to, that has nicotine in it? It's not prescription, anyone that's sold it, that, uh, nicotine?
I don't think, I don't think.
I don't know.
All right, uh, we're ready to vote on ordinance one-one-one, oh-fourteen, amending the city code to increase the age of sale, purchase, and possession of tobacco or liquid nicotine products, um, from eighteen to twenty-one as amended. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Bradway?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Nine to nothing, the motion passes. All right, that does complete our agenda, and we are at call of the wards. Alderman Grover?
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Burris, please have no reports. Thank you. Um, Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Thank you. And Alderman Bradway?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just briefly, thank you all for your support of the Penny Park contract, as well as supporting the change in ordinance for the M W E B E committee.
All right, thank you. Alderman Wynn?
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
I will.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Tendem?
Thank you. I have a report.
Go for it.
Uh, there's a, there'll be a six-four meeting on October thirtieth, that's Thursday, October thirtieth, seven P M. at Three Crowns Center. Uh, it will be, there'll be presentation by the Evanston Police Force, the video of, of the, sort of, kind of, that's of recent, uh, crime, violent crime. There will also be a presentation by the, um, Preservation Commission regarding, uh, questions that will come up in our name, in our ward about, um, historical preservation of residences, uh, on a house-by-house basis. So those two things and a few other things, uh, parks erect, and the usual. So, seven o'clock, Three Crowns, uh, on October thirtieth. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson, do you have a motion for us?
I do. Uh, pursuant to five, I compile statutes, I L C S one-twenty slash two A, two A, and the, the city council convened in the executive session to discuss agenda items regarding litigation amendments. These agenda items are appointed subjects to be considered in executive session, and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are five, I L C S one-twenty slash two A, C eleven, and C twenty-one.
Thank you very much. Holmes? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.